Recognize and welcome our city council members. We do have Councilmember Burrell. We've got Councilmember Paul, Councilmember Saxton, Councilmember Tafoya, and we do not have Councilmember Yeoman at this moment. We'll see if she rolls in. But we do have a quorum. We can get started. We've asked Councilmember Paul if he will go ahead and lead us in a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Thank you for coming tonight. Will you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. All right. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And we do have Carleen. I see her walking in. I'm going to just give her a second and then we'll do the consent items. In case she has something she wants to make comment on.
We've got to continue in a moment of silence.
And we do have Councilmember Yeoman with us tonight. Thanks, Carleen. Okay. We have a couple of consent items, specifically the approval of the April 2nd and 16th, 2019 Roy City Council meeting minutes, and the approval of the new Business Board Advisory alternate members Jake Draper and Stacy Bascher.
Brascher.
Brascher. Council, any comment on these consent items?
No. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the consent items.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. We have some presentations we'd like to start with, specifically with Waste Management. So, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, for having me out tonight. It's an absolute pleasure. My name's Blake Leonelli with Waste Management. And really, tonight is a brief presentation on really how the Easter egg hunt went and to say thank you for allowing us to be part of it. Give you a brief overview of, you know, what that looked like, any questions you may have. And we look forward to, you know, continuing to support this event. As we go through briefly, Waste Management donated, did a $3,000 sponsorship, donated over 1,000 items, and we actually increased the Touch a Truck event this year to two trucks, which was a huge success. Everybody really enjoyed it. So, along with us. I have to tell you, this was my first year doing the Easter egg hunt, and I did not realize the effort and the amazing event that it is. I, it was interesting. I was talking to a few members of your staff, and I said, "Gosh, these items must be good. It must take them three minutes to, you know, get all these items." And they said, "Three minutes?" I think it was 39 seconds is the number that somebody said. So, it was a, it was a great pleasure to be part of this. And just a few pictures from this. This is one of the Touch a Truck events with members of council, mayor, as well as our team. So, again, thank you. And really, that, one of the highlights for us was we donated a diecast truck for this event, put it in one of the Easter eggs as a grand prize event, and this young lady won it. And she was beaming ear to ear. So, it was a lot of fun for us. We look forward to doing it for many years to come and, you know, open it up if there was any questions, but really just to say thank you. And I know, I'll make sure to pass out this presentation, put it in PDF format, and send it over to mayor as well as council. So, you have that. And then there were some questions. Several people had asked me about some different recycling items. And so, I wanted to make sure to really just end the presentation with the recycle often, recycle right. So, residents as well as staff knows this is a place that you can find many of those items. We've spoken in great detail about it. So, again, I just want to say thank you and, you know, if there's any questions. But otherwise, all right.
Counsel, questions, comments?
Thank you. We appreciate the support.
Thank you for the partnership.
No, absolutely.
Blake, it's a great thing. We've been doing it for a few years with Waste Management. Like you said, it's a fantastic partnership. We appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
And we look forward to doing it in the future many, many times.
Yep. It's beneficial both ways. So, it just, it melted my heart doing the, doing all of it and seeing everybody get excited. It's amazing what a 15, you know, cent toter, how excited a kid gets over a mini garbage can. So, no, we appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Excellent, excellent event. Thank you. Okay. Next presentation, Boys and Girls Club.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for letting us be here. My name's Cash Knight. I'm the operations director for the Boys and Girls Club of Weber Davis. And more than anything, we're here to just express our gratitude. We could not do what we do without, without you and the support from the city. Currently, we average about 120, 130 kids a day at the Roy Hope Center, just right downstairs. And during the summer, that number gets even bigger. So, we're making a big impact in Roy. And I could tell you about all the amazing things we're doing, but I think that our, our youth and our staff are a much better representation of what we really do than I am. So, Kenzie, take it away.
Hi. I'm one of the students to attend the teen program at the, downstairs. And I used to go to the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Salt Lake, and I loved it there. And sometimes I just felt like I wasn't being involved, I guess you could say. And after moving to Roy and experiencing this teen program and knowing that I can have support from my fellow peers and support from staff, I think that's definitely helped me to want to, to have motivation and to want to move forward. So, thank you guys very much for donating and helping it be what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you for being a part of it.
Hello. My name is Maddie. I've been a reading tutor for almost two years now at the Roy Club. And just one example of something that has really impacted my life is working with a certain little boy. He's about third grade. And at first, he's super, super shy, just would not talk. Like, the only words I could get him to say were the words on the page that he was supposed to read. And the more that I've been able to work with him, he has shown great accomplishments of just social skills and reading, and that's something that I've really enjoyed being a part of. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. My name's Destiny. I've worked at the Boys and Girls Club since I was 16. I'm actually 18 now and graduated. And working at the Boys and Girls Club was my first job. I've lived in Roy all of my life, graduated from Roy High, and it was a great place to start and a great place to develop my career skills, my people skills, leadership skills. One thing that really impacted me at the club is I work with a little boy in fourth grade with tutoring. He's on the autism spectrum. And just working with him, we were working on reading, but also show social skills, like she said. He didn't have a lot of friends. It was just kind of hard for him to communicate what he wanted. And after tutoring and the tutoring program and our summer program, I can't even get him to talk to me anymore because he's hanging out with his friends. We used to be best friends. So, our program is just really great in helping kids with what they want to do, their social skills, their reading skills. So, I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts. That's awesome.
We, I hate to be prideful, but we do a lot of great things. And we've got some amazing people with us, and I cannot express my gratitude enough for everything that, that all of you do for us and the support we have. And then thank you to our teens who are here learning a little bit about city council, and our board chair, Kimberly, and of course, our board member, Jan. So, truly, thank you so much for all you do for us.
Thank you. Thanks, Cash.
Thank you.
Okay. Come back often. Those are great stories. Thank you. Okay. We now have budget proposal fiscal year 2019 update or '20? Thank you. I want to make sure we got that right. Matt, we'll turn it over to you.
So, as you guys, as you guys seen in the council packet, we present to you the FYE 2020 tentative budget. How this goes is that it's an administrative budget, and I'll kind of go over the timelines and stuff of how we came to this. And then tonight, we're presenting it to council and becomes a council budget. This is a balanced budget, no anticipation of a tax increase either. So, it's balanced, meaning revenues equal expenditures. This budget start, started actually on February 22nd, where we distribute all this information out to the department heads, and they start working it within their teams, and then send it back to the finance department. And on April 12th to the 15th, the budget, or the, the department heads and myself and Camille, we got together and we had some really good discussion to balance the budget. And then we work it and write the budget, which is presented for you today. During those department head meetings, there was five objectives that we were trying to meet. These objectives are the five objectives in this, in the strategic plan. To quickly run through and not go into very much detail on them, but community pride would be the first objective. Continue our beautification efforts with the neighborhood cleanup and different creative ways that we can beautify our community. Community pride also is in relation to Roy Days and other community activities that we present to the, to the citizens of Roy. Economic development, a meeting that we just all got, some of us just got out of. The economic committee will continue to look for ways to bridge the gap with businesses, bringing them to Roy, and continue to help existing businesses in Roy. Infrastructure, a main point of the budget was the relocation, well, the relocation of some of the departments and the demolition of Moeda to try to save money in the future. As you guys all know, we purchased Moeda. We should probably do something with the, and this information's presented in the budget. Workforce development, we continued with our step scale with the merits of city employees. We looked at position adjustments. We looked at reallocating different employees throughout the department to become more efficient as well. There was also an emphasis in employee training that you'll see a little bit of adjustment in employee training budgets. Traffic, been kind of a topic within the city, but we're already starting 5,600 corridor meetings next week, but that's going to be a big topic, I believe, next year, that we're going to be working with that study with some UDOT engineers. That's the five objective, objectives that we really were focusing on. The general fund has an $18.5 million budget. Utility enterprise funds, we looked at utility rate increases. The majority of those increases are going to be flow-through, meaning that they're going to be paying for other, to other agencies, such as Waste Management or, like Weber Basin Water. We're looking at infrastructure needs as well, so there's a rate increase to help facilitate those needs. Anyway, I would like to propose, and we proposed before, that we would like to do a work session next Tuesday, May 14th at 5:30, so we could go in a little bit more in detail. I'd like to invite the, the community as well, that we can discuss the budget a little bit more fully, that you guys can come to the, to the workshop with any questions and have a week to review it. But happy reading. It's 108 pages long. I have to give a shout out to Camille. I know I did the budget last year, but I've had eight years to prepare to write a budget last year. Camille, she did it within a couple of months, so she did a fantastic job, so. But anyway, happy reading, and let me know if you have any questions.
Counsel, any comments? Are you okay with the next Tuesday, May 15th workshop?
Yes.
I'll be out of town, but I can call in for it.
Okay.
14th.
Is it 14th? I'm sorry. And what time is that?
5:30.
5:30. And I assume it will be downstairs?
Downstairs.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments on the budget, counsel?
Nope. Yeah, it's looking good.
Okay. Everybody okay?
Yep.
Okay. Camille, well done. Okay, I read through it. Excellent, excellent. Well done. Okay. Thank you, Matt. I'd like to do a presentation for promotions, and I think, Jeff, you must have almost the entire team here. So, please, step up and let's go through this. It's exciting.
Thanks, Mayor, Council. This is always the exciting part. We've had, you know, a few changes, some promotions and some new hires, so we just want to recognize them tonight. So, it's kind of fun to do it in front of the public, so I'm glad they're here as well. So, to start off, let's go ahead and do, we'll do the promotions first. We're swearing them individually, correct? Okay. Perfect. Brandon Story. I'm going to bring up his dad, Mike Story, as well. Have Mike come up. This is kind of a fun deal for me today, so this is kind of exciting, but, um, come up, Mike. I'm going to bring you up. So, Brandon, I'd like to congratulate Brandon. He's our new captain, one of our new captains in the fire department. We had a captain open, went through a testing process, and Brandon shined and did a great job. So, we're super excited to have him. He's been with the city for a while now. You know, he's just kind of a natural leader. He kind of draws people to him and does a good job, makes great decisions. He's the son of Mike Story, which is retired deputy chief from the fire department, so which is pretty exciting. So, tonight, I'm going to have Mike actually pin on Brandon's bugles. So, I think that was appropriate for Mike to do that. Kind of exciting. I know his family's here as well, so I'll let him introduce those, but I'll give Mike the honors here to pin on Brandon's captain bugles. And we do want to say, I think Mike looks a lot better in this uniform than he does Cody and Leroy, I'll have you guys come up too. I'll bring up my two deputy chiefs as well, so. Got to have the hug like a Boy Scout advanced.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that's cool. See you then. You want to, so we'll just swear, you want to swear him in now? Don't do that.
Okay. State your name.
Hi, Brandon Story.
Having been elected or appointed.
Having been elected or appointed.
To the office of captain.
The office of captain.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
The Constitution of the state of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office of fidelity.
Of my office of fidelity.
Congratulations. While he finishes that up, Brandon's going to, is a great asset to the city. He's going to continue to do a good job as a captain. We're super excited to have him. We're lucky to have him, so.
Brandon, could you introduce your family to us?
Yeah, this, so, my wife, stand up for a minute. This is my wife, Erin, and my son, Emerson. He's 11 months old.
Oh, that's great.
And he finally slept last night for the whole night. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right. Next, I'd like to, like to recognize Chris Montgomery. So, I'll have Chris come up real quick. So, a few of you might recognize Chris. Chris was recognized here in council meeting a few, I don't know how long it's been, a few weeks ago now, for he was one of the guy, he was actually the one that went through the window and rescued the little boy in the building fire that we had. So, that's, that's doing great. So, it's kind of an honor to recognize Chris again for a great, another great accomplishment. We're pretty lucky to have such good people. But Chris graduated paramedic school, class of 2019 from Weber State University. Just a couple statistics on that and kind of what a feat that is, because I don't think a lot of people understand exactly what you kind of go through to graduate through paramedic school. But in the state of Utah, we only have about 40, a little over 4500 certified paramedics in the whole state. So, the pass rate for a paramedic coming out of paramedic school, the fill rate's about, well, the pass rate's about 66%. So, that's about the pass rate to get through paramedic school. The paramedic dropout rate nationwide is anywhere between 10 and 40% and as high as 50%.
Wow.
Those were standards that came from Weber State University. We're pretty, pretty lucky, so to even be standing here, graduating from a paramedic class is one thing, but Chris did it as the outstanding student of his class, so, which is pretty impressive. I hate to brag, he has a lot of, a lot of good, big steps to fill, both the deputy chief, graduated Weber State's program with the same honor. So, we got a lot of good people that have done a lot of really good things, and we continue to promote, and people do a lot of good things. So, we're excited for Chris. So, that was an honor, which is kind of put together by the staff, the way Chris interacted with, you know, during his ride-alongs and when he, when he was doing his rides and his other clinical hours. Just know this class, how many, yeah, 23?
24 graduated.
24 graduate from Weber State's class. They have one of the highest pass rates in the whole country. They're, they actually send students there from all over the country, plus even out, I think, a couple of years ago, they had students from Saudi Arabia that went through the paramedic program at Weber State. They're just known for how good a program they have. So, we're really lucky to have that in our backyard. And then the Chris, two, about two-thirds of the class was sponsored students, correct? They were sponsored students from other departments, so Chris actually shined from all departments, from down south, South Weber, West Jordan, Logan, Leighton, South Davis, Metro. They all had students in their class from these departments, and Chris actually outshined those a lot, got outstanding students. So, we're pretty lucky to have him here. He's going to be working, he has his paramedic patch on already, so we're excited for him. So, we just want to recognize him and his efforts. He actually, we just got your paperwork done just the other day. So, he's official pass done, ready to work, so we're excited to have him. So, Chris, congratulations. I appreciate the good effort. You do a good job, and we'll swear to you in.
Hi, state your name.
Hi, Chris Montgomery.
Having been elected or appointed.
Having been elected or appointed.
To the office of paramedic.
To the office of paramedic.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
The Constitution of the state of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office of fidelity.
Of my office of fidelity.
Well done. I think your family's here as well, right? So, I'll let you introduce your family, Chris.
So, I'm, I'm very lucky to have a family that is very supportive of everything that I've done. So, I brought with me my wife, back there. My father, who's sitting next to her, and my mother, who's, of course, holding the camera.
Okay. Congratulations, Chris. Excellent, excellent job. Thank you.
Yeah. Also with that, we also had another one of Roy City's graduate, so Chris was a sponsored student from Roy City. We sponsored Chris through paramedic school. We also had one of our, we have a part-time employee, Chandler Stimson. She's, could not make it tonight. She is on our transfer division. She's not a firefighter, but transfers on our ALS transfer unit. She actually put herself through paramedic school and graduated from paramedic school as well, just recently with Chris. So, we want to make sure we recognize her as well. She just could not make it tonight, so we're, we're, we're super excited for that. That's as far as promotions. We do have some new hires or some rehires, I guess, depending on how you'd like to look at it. But first one we'll swear in is Nick Jarvis. So, Nick is, is, is one of our paramedics. He actually came back to us, so we're super excited to have Nick back. He's a wealth of knowledge. He's looked up to for his, for, you know, his skills and his knowledge. Still flies for Air Med, don't you?
I quit.
You quit? Okay. Yeah, that's right. He's currently in nursing school. He's trying to finish up nursing school. He was working in Air Med. Nick comes with a plethora of information and guidance. He's, he's one of the good ones, so we're super glad to have him, and we'll go ahead and swear, swear you in again.
Okay.
Yeah, appreciate it. Next name.
Hi, state your name.
Hi, Nick Jarvis.
Having been elected or appointed.
Having been elected or appointed.
The office of paramedic.
The office of paramedic.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
The Constitution of the state of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office of fidelity.
Of my office of fidelity.
Congratulations. You got your family here as well? Dave? Introduce us. Who you got?
So, I have, I also have a pretty supportive family. My beautiful wife, Elise, my youngest daughter, Jessica, my youngest son, Michael. I have four other children that are somewhere else.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Dave.
Thank you.
Hi, state your name.
Hi, Tanner Westmore.
Having been elected or appointed.
Having been elected or appointed.
To the office of firefighter.
The office of firefighter.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
The Constitution of the state of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office of fidelity.
Of my office of fidelity.
Congratulations. You got your family here as well?
Yeah. So, this is my wife, Chelsea. She's holding my four-year-old daughter, Bentley, and then my 10-month-old daughter's asleep in the infant area down by her feet, so, thank you. It's good to be back.
Thanks, Nick. Thanks for coming back.
Very glad to have you. We also have a swearing in. We're supposed to have a swearing in for Braden Toon. He also could not make it tonight, so. We also have two firefighters, two new firefighters swearing that came into the firefighter ranks. All of them have come up together since they're both firefighters. It's Dave Urmer and Tanner Russell. Both of you guys come up. So, we're super excited to have these guys as well. As you can see, we've, we've had some new hires and had some moving around and had some promotions, so we kind of got a lot of stuff going on, but we are excited to have both these guys in our department. They come again with a wealth of knowledge and experience. Dave, over 15 years, six, over 23 years total experience. So, we're able to bring Dave back, which he's just an awesome asset to our department. Comes with a wealth of knowledge, and a lot of people look up, and he's, he's well-respected. We got Tanner. We're glad to have Tanner back. He's just a stud, so, he just does a really, he just does a really good job. One of the nicest guys you'll ever meet, treats his patients very well, eager to learn, and we're just super lucky to have him as well. So, congratulations, guys. So, we'll do Dave and Tanner.
Okay. Do Dave?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, state your name.
Hi, Tanner Westmore.
promotion, so we kind of got a lot of stuff going on, but we are excited to have both these guys in our department. They come again with a wealth of knowledge and experience, Dave, over fifteen years, six, over twenty-three years total experience, so we're able to bring Dave back, which he's just an awesome asset to our department, comes with a wealth of knowledge, and a lot of people look up, he's, he's well-respected. We got Tanner, we're glad to have Tanner back, he's just a stud, so, he just does a really, he just does a really good job, one of the nicest guys you'll ever meet, treats his patients very well, eager to learn, and we're just super lucky to have him as well, so, congratulations, guys. So, we'll do Dave and Tanner.
Okay. Do Dave?
Yep.
Okay, I, state your name.
Hi, Dave Urmer.
Having been elected or appointed...
Having been elected or appointed.
To the office of firefighter.
The office of firefighter.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties...
And that I will discharge the duties...
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. You got your family here as well, Dave? Introduce us, who you got?
So, I have, I also have a pretty supportive family, my beautiful wife Elise, my youngest daughter Jessica, my youngest son Michael, I have four other children that are somewhere else.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Dave.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, state your name.
Hi, Tanner Westmore.
Having been elected or appointed...
Having been elected or appointed.
To the office of firefighter.
The office of firefighter.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties...
And I will discharge the duties...
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
That's, and I think that's all we got. So, Mayor Council thinks that's kind of the changes, promotions, and new hires that we've had recently, so it's kind of a lot, but these guys do a great job, they work really hard to keep the citizens safe, you know, and they, they just do with honor, and they, they, they love what they do, and they love being for, working for this city, so just want you to know that, so appreciate it.
Thanks, well done, Jeff, thank you. Counsel, any comments about our public safety?
Welcome aboard.
Great job.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome, great to have you, great to have you. Okay, we do have some action items. Let's go ahead and we'll look at Resolution nineteen-eight, designate an individual to act in behalf of Roy City in the transactions concerning public treasury investment funds. Matt, you talk in that one?
Yes, this Resolution nineteen-eight may look a little familiar to you. We actually did this last year. What this is doing is it's, it's allowing city employees to be designated to act in behalf of the city for the public treasurer's fund. What it's allowing them to do is change, when their staff changes, that they can go online and make those changes without having to do a resolution. So, you have to ask yourself, why are we redoing the resolution? The reason why is because there was two individuals that were signers, myself and Jason, that are going to be removed from that and have the financial staff be on that, so that's the city treasurer, Nikki Higgs, the management service director, Camille Cook, and the accounting manager, Brady Hammer. So, this is just a new state requirement, we've never had to do it in the past until this last year, and hopefully this will be the last time we do it, so...
Okay, perfect. Counsel, comments, questions? Okay, do I have a motion then to approve Resolution nineteen-eight?
I'll make that motion that we approve Resolution nineteen-eight, designating individuals to act on behalf of Roy City in transactions concerning public treasurer's investment fund.
Thank you.
And I'll second that motion.
Second, perfect, okay, this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Yoman?
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, Resolution nineteen-nine, declaring May ninth through the eleventh National Nurses' Week. Is that you?
Do you mind if I talk about this?
We're excited, if you'd like to talk, please step up, give us your name and share the story, we're excited.
All right, I don't know the formality, I apologize for that, but I appreciate the opportunity to mention this. So, so I'm from Nightingale College, we're a nursing college that was founded in Ogden, Utah, has continued to branch out to other areas and has one of its designations here at Heritage Park in Roy, so we have ninety nurses that are enrolled. The college has taken a huge initiative this year to, to help recognize Nurses' Week. I, we saw this on the agenda today, and so that's why we're here, so I'm the vice president at Nightingale College, and my name's Jonathan Tanner, I've got Brooke Fascher here, she's a representative of our marketing department. But as we saw this, so Nurses' Week is actually sixth through the twelfth, just to, just to clarify, and we have done a, an initiative within the state of Utah, not necessarily recognize National Nurses' Week, but to recognize this as Nurses' Week. So, Governor, Governor Herbert signed in a declaration earlier this week, and different cities have acknowledged this, and so we have partners across the, the state, as well as in three other states, that have taken this initiative to recognize Nurses' Week, and they've done that through a variety of billboards and things, not necessarily recognize Nightingale College, but to recognize nurses and to celebrate nurses for what they do for our community. So anyways, just a note here that I saw on your item, I thought it might be good to do it through the sixth through the twelfth, and then not necessarily to declare National Nurses' Week, that's already been declared and written in, but Nurses' Week would be a recommendation, so, and then Nurses' Week culminates on Florence Nightingale's birthday, the, you know, the founder of modern nursing, the, the name we carry as a college, and so, just for your information.
Right, okay, we appreciate your input, that's excellent. Comments, counsel?
I just had one, is there any celebrations or anything going on to kind of recognize, you know, nurses and what they do for us, is there?
Yeah, throughout the state, there's a lot of initiatives going on through the hospitals and long-term care centers. There's a lot of gifts and notes and personal notes that are given, the school itself, yesterday was with different mayors, you know, giving out special notes to nurses. We have a faculty and a staff that obviously is made up of nurses, so schools in large do special things during this week, and then we have billboard companies like, you know, Campus and Reagan and select other ones that are donating free space on all the electronic billboards in Utah and displaying Happy Nurses' Week and bringing recognition to them and what they mean, so there's a lot, there's a lot going on this week.
Perfect.
So, we just have any nurses in our lives, and we need to just tell them how much we appreciate them.
That would be ideal. They are, they consistently every year rank among the most trusted professions, I, I think that in a large is because they're around our most vulnerable moments as human beings, and they're there to take care of us, and it's important that, you know, they understand how much we appreciate them, that's not always the case, when we're in pain or we're going through these struggles and we feel vulnerable, we tend to put up walls and protect ourselves, and, and nurses tend to take the, the brunt of that, and so this is our week to kind of pull those walls down and really recognize them for who they are.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, great explanation. Thank you.
Mr. Tanner, you specifically mentioned Heritage Park because you place students there, is that the...
Yeah, it's one of our partners, so...
Partner.
The way the model works is that we have healthcare facilities that donate space to Nightingale College, we outfit it with a simulation lab, and that is the area in which we then recruit nurses from, specifically for Heritage Park and other partners, they have certain nurse demand needs, and so our enrollment fluctuates based upon their demand, and so Heritage Park is the hub that supports Nightingale College in this community, which is, should be recognized, they are a fantastic facility for what they do for Roy.
Thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Counsel, in light of the information, it probably would be a good idea if we amend this and indicate that it was May sixth through the twelfth, and that it's actually Nurses' Week, does that be okay? So, if I get a motion...
It's in the body, but apparently it's...
Can you get to the top?
It doesn't get to the top.
If I get a motion then with that amendment, do I have a motion to go ahead and approve Resolution nineteen-nine?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and adopt, approve Resolution nineteen-nine, declaring May sixth through the twelfth as Nurses' Week.
Excellent, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and this is a roll call vote?
Excuse me, councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Right.
Councilmember Yoman?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you, and thanks for that explanation, that was excellent, okay? Great information, thank you, thank you much. Okay, Resolution nineteen-ten, approving the interlocal cooperative agreement between Weber County and Roy City for ramp funding. Travis?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I am here to look for your approval in Resolution nineteen-ten, it's an interlocal agreement between us and Weber County. Back in January, Deputy Director Jody Call and Kevin Tubbs, water, stormwater superintendent, put in for a ramp grant to get benches with cement pads underneath them down along the fish pond. The total cost of the project is going to be a little over twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, we requested six thousand and were rewarded that amount, so I am here today to try to get your blessing to approve that, and we can move forward with the project.
Perfect. Counsel, comments, questions?
That's great.
That's great.
Yeah.
Approve Resolution nineteen-ten, approving interlocal cooperation agreement between Weber County and Roy City for ramp funding.
Second, second, okay, this is a roll call vote?
Councilmember Burrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Yoman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tafoya?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Saxton?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you, okay, great, great to hear that, Travis. Okay, this is a time for public comment, if you have anything you want to talk about, any topics you'd like to talk about, please step up to the mic and just give us your name and address. Anything? Thank you, okay?
Jamie Larson, five-five-seven-four-south, thirty-seven-fifty-west, I'm sure you're getting sick of seeing my face at this point.
No, no.
The assisted living facility, I brought it up back on the April second meeting, that we had had issues with flooding. Since then, this morning, we were finally able to get plans, well, because since then, about two weeks after our flooding, they'd already graded the property behind us, well, they started doing the concrete work in the drains, and we realized it was pointed all right at our house. And so, it's pretty much a guarantee that they are the reason our basement is flooded, and we've been dealing with this nightmare that is still ongoing, because additional water ended up getting through, and we are now dealing with a mold situation where we had to throw out all the furniture, because it was where it was all stacked. But, and that, we've had other issues, really from day one, they show up ten o'clock at night, me and my husband, what in the world's that sound? It sounds like someone is in our backyard driving a truck through it, there's an excavator right there on our property line. It's been that way for over a year now. I kept trying not to complain, because I kept saying, you know, that, we found out it's an assisted living facility, that's a pretty good deal for us to have behind us as far as commercial property goes, it, the construction will be over, we'll make it through it, it'll be done, they'll have their ordinances, we'll have a fence, it'll be dealt with. Well, we've continued to have problems, I brought up to Councilman Saxton last week following the transportation meeting, that the Friday previous to that, they had speakers blaring at our house, which is unusual, we usually sound like we've got an arena concert going on in the middle of our home, but this was the most profane music I've ever heard in my entire life, it was F this, F that, that, tried reaching out to the general contractor to ask him to kindly remind subcontractors that he's, this is a residential area, I mean, we were in our home, windows closed, doors closed, blinds down, TV turned way up, and you could hear it crystal clear, I have two small children, I mean, I'm an adult, I don't want to hear that in my home, but I can deal with it, my two children shouldn't have to. So then, still, keep thinking, it's almost over, we're down to the last couple of weeks of construction. The fence goes up yesterday, it's four feet tall behind our property. We have been assured that there's a six-foot fence ordinance, I even called the city planner this morning, and the first thing I asked him was, is there not a height minimum requirement? And he said, yeah, it's six feet, as soon as he found out where I was talking about, he started trying to backtrack, dismissed me, told me, well, it's not like there's going to be that many people back there anyway, because I said, doesn't it matter that their ground level is up that high, there's a sidewalk right along their fence, and they've now only got a four-foot fence on their side, looking right down into my property, plus I had mentioned at the last council meeting, we've got these commercial HVAC systems right behind us, and we can already hear them, there's only one been on, and it's been on low, because it's not been hot yet, and you can hear it, so you know, once summer's going and there's two full systems going, it's going to be loud, and because the fence is only four foot, feet tall, it's sitting up above that fence line, and honestly, we don't know what to do, because we're, we're trying everything, we're trying to, we've tried to be good neighbors, and we just keep being dismissed. I, I've been told that, and there have been people trying to get the assisted living facility to reach out to us neighbors, we still haven't ever heard anything from them, and I'm just wondering if there's anything the council can do, we're, we're at the end of our rope, we're frustrated.
Matt, let me ask you a question, I mean, before they could set up business, they have to pass all our occupancy requirements and say, things have to be done before you can start business?
Yeah, I think they do go through the review process, I can speak to some of it, with the, I personally went out there prior to the fence going up, this was a couple of weeks ago, and looked into the ordinance with a fence regarding a retaining wall, because I was concerned that they would put the fence along the retaining wall and not up on the retaining wall, there's requirements that state that if you're on a retaining wall, that you can cut the fence in half, it's all in ordinance right now, so the contractor is abiding by that ordinance, we were trying, we also, I also emailed, well, I, not personally, but I directed staff to email the contractor to reach out to the citizens, we got some of that with the cameras and the music and stuff, so we, we did send some emails to them, it's hard for us to force them to do something like that, we can continue to look in ways we can, but as far as when the administration staff goes and looks at it, they're abiding by the policy or the ordinances.
Okay, have we been out there, are any engineer out there due to the runoff problem or issue, because it didn't exist prior to, now it does, have we checked into that?
I personally have not checked into the runoff issue, we can direct the engineers to go down there and review the plans to see that.
Because I think that's very important, I mean, yeah, everybody wants to be good neighborly, but the problem wasn't there until this occurred, so you know that that happened.
Yeah, I can, I can only assure you that passed the initial review, and they do go through the inspection process and stuff, but we can have them go down there and address that specific topic.
Well, because anytime that you have construction, you're always supposed to have the water drainage go away from your building so it doesn't back up, so you've got it backing up right into their, their backyard, so if you've got their drainage going down away, and if their backyard slopes, yeah, you're going to have a drainage problem right there where that meets.
Yeah, when I...
So, there's got to be something, if that's the case, then we've got to put some type of a, what do you call, yeah, drain, that's something in between the two, so that doesn't happen.
French drain or something.
Yeah, French drain or something.
Yeah.
So, is that backing up from their property all the way across your backyard into your house?
Yeah, so we, our entire basement has flooded, and...
I, I heard you say that, I need to come over.
Yeah, we're talking, our entire basement, walls ripped out, baseboards ripped out, replacing carpets, bad.
Have you been in contact with them about that, or are you doing so on your own?
No, we were, we were trying to figure out really what the issue was before we went guns blazing, we, you know, we don't, we don't want to blame people for something that might not be their fault, but we got the city plans today, and they do have a drainage system, but it says they can't use that drainage system until inspection's completed, and then, like I mentioned, the concrete work and the actual crate drains, they're right behind our property, those didn't go in until after the flood, and so once those went in, we were visibly able to see that the grading and slope was pointed directly at our property, because that's right where the drain is.
Let me make a comment of a can, oh, go ahead, Brian, I'm sorry.
Just a couple of questions, we went down and looked at the fence problem probably two or three weeks ago, and I thought that was going to be adjusted.
There's two pieces to this, that, that, what we did was, is that, and if I can read what the site plan specifically states, okay? And I think it's important, if you can, Andy, Matt, if you can work this, it shows on the site plan, number six, and the site plan number six says, coordinate with the property owners to remove and replace the existing fence along the south and west property lines with a new six-foot, let me repeat that, with a new six-foot vinyl fence as required by city ordinance. So, to one part of your conversation, you're on the west side.
Yes, we are on the west side.
And on the west side, did they put a four-foot fence or a six-foot fence?
We have a six-foot fence about ten feet into our property, but then when the ground raises up...
Yes.
It's down to a four-foot fence, plus our existing fence is still there, they've never...
And that's a six-foot fence.
So, six foot, and then it actually drops down to the four-foot fence, so it comes into our property higher, and then drops.
So, it's retaining walls, let's say...
So, where the retaining wall is the four feet, it's up like two-thirds up our fence line, about four feet, and then there's a four-foot vinyl fence on top of that, but that's actually dropped from the other, one first side of our property where there's a smaller retaining wall, and they've got the full six-foot fence, and then the fence drops.
It, it almost looks like you can jump from the sidewalk, from the assisted living center...
Yes, right into our property.
Into their backyard.
And I think, and I think, Matt, along the lines, at least as, as I previewed this, okay, and I'm just previewing what was agreed to and signature, it basically says the six-foot fence runs the entire length of the west side, and that six-foot fence then would have been, in my opinion, giving that at least some barrier between, because it is raised about almost three feet at that back end, that that would give them enough barrier that people walking on that sidewalk that was mentioned before would not have necessarily access or privacy to your backyard.
So, based on the ordinance, did they use part of the retaining wall as...
As the six-foot.
That's what the city planner told me, that two feet of the retaining wall counts, and so that's why they can get away with a four-foot fence.
Well...
But is that part of the retaining wall below your property line?
The retaining wall is above, because they came in and raised their ground up right at our fence.
Fence line, that's, that's right.
Up the four feet, and so that's where the retaining wall is, and then the sidewalk is flush with the retaining wall, it's right on top of it.
Right.
And that's where the four-foot fence is. And so that's why they can get away with a four-foot fence.
But is that part of the retaining wall below your property line?
The retaining wall is above, because they came in and raised their ground up right at our fence.
Fence line, that's, that's right.
Up the four feet. And so that's where the retaining wall is. And then the sidewalk is flush with the retaining wall, it's right on top of it.
Right.
And that's where the four-foot fence is.
And then did the music start?
Yeah, we haven't had any music since the last week, thank goodness. So.
But we got, but we got flooding.
But they haven't had really workers out there working on the top either, so.
It's bad at raining.
But I sense we still have a rain, water problem and we still have a, for better word, there should be a six-foot fence. I think it might be an ordinance issue, um, and I think that needs to be looked at, Matt, as you suggested, maybe in flames, but that surely is not clear on the agreement. And what is also not clear on the agreement is that, and I think I understand why, it specifically stated that they would work with each of the residents, okay, prior to putting up the six-foot fence. Now, this one does say that they would do a pull and replace, so they would take out the old and put a new one in.
Which they have not done, there's a little gap in between our.
And there's a gap.
So it's going to collect every bit of trash that blows.
And who's, who's taking care of the weeds in there? Can the city basically, I, I think this is just the start of an ongoing issue. I think we just need to have a sub, sit down with the contractor and ask the questions. Is there anything that we can do to try to mitigate this? Otherwise, to be very blunt with you, there's a good argument to suggest is, is maybe we need to change the ordinance. Because this relationship between residential and commercial was set up such that we could provide that appropriate barrier. We did so when we looked at the property where the 7-Eleven was and where the, um, where the Ace Hardware Store, when we put a 12-foot brick fence behind them. That was decided not to do that in this case. And, uh, not sure exactly why, but that was not, not something.
I can't speak to why either. I know that we tried to nip it right out of the gate and that's why, I went down there on a Sunday afternoon when I got an email about it and took, um, we were at a meeting and then dropped by afterwards. And then we came back to the city hall and emailed the contractor. So we really tried to do something about it beforehand, um, and now we can try to work it afterhand. I haven't been down there to view the fence myself. Um, I've just heard about the ordinance and stuff, so we'll, we'll relook at it.
Okay.
And see if we can do anything, account with anything.
Are there any others that you know?
Um, there, for flooding? For flooding or for the fence?
Yeah, for anything, the development, any issues with anybody else?
There are other homeowners affected.
Yeah, and that's a good question, Dave. Uh, I've got a, a number of inquiries indicating that cameras are poking and looking into people's back windows of their houses.
Yes, the cameras point on the corners, kind of right down into the yards where young children are playing.
We did require, when there was the, um, over on 4800, the dental office across from Burger King, um, you know, the dentist?
Yeah.
Okay, you know where Burger King is?
Now, there's a pharmacy in, no.
No, 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 the other one.
Is it on dental?
Yeah, yeah, that one. So when that went in, that was buttoned up against, um, commercial, I mean, residential just like this is. And I know that we did require them to also put a six-foot fence above the retaining wall. So if you look at that, that's really quite high. That's running a line because of the same issue with the residents, they wanted to make sure that there was privacy and stuff going from there, so.
Between cement and the fence about that big, we made it close again.
Yeah, so I know that we did require that. So I feel like that same situation needs to apply here.
So Matt, I think the mayor's correct. If you could get a sit-down with the contractor and the engineers and the neighbors, it's okay, let's see if we can work this out amenable and get the situation solved. Also have our engineers check out to make sure all the engineering and drainage is done properly.
On the drainage, yes. Because we have.
Yeah, that drainage.
Okay. We're apologizing. Uh, this really, uh, to be very honest with you, the feedback we got when we first proposed that the residents in the area actually said they welcomed it. The alternative was, is the 37-foot, uh, concrete, uh, building, which was perfectly zoned for that area, uh, they felt the assisted living. But they did say upfront, two things. One is they were concerned, when I talked to them personally, they were concerned about water drainage, to ensure that the water would not come in their backyards, as it appears that we have a problem, at least in yours and maybe others. And second is privacy. They absolutely said they needed to have the privacy so they can enjoy their backyards. That was their only concern, otherwise they welcomed it in.
And that is exactly how we have felt about this project. I mean, the whole discussions happened actually during our due diligence and posted yet, you guys had just voted on it and we didn't know. So when we looked at it, it was zoned residential and showing for sale. So we got a big surprise when all of a sudden the excavator was in their, our backyard. And so, it's been a challenge, but we appreciate.
Well, if we don't know, we can't help, so, but you brought all this to our attention.
Yeah. Would you just make sure that, that Matt has your name and phone number? I think this is going to require some follow-on discussion, okay?
Yes, okay. So Jamie Larson, 801-719-0291.
Nine-one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else would like to share a thought? Please, name and phone number, or name and address.
Brayden Standard, 5544 South, 3750 West. Um, I don't want to reiterate what Jamie talked about, but, uh, it absolutely is an issue. I have a photo, if you guys want to see it after, of, of the actual fence. All we want is it to be what they said it was going to be. From day one, the original rendition of what they showed us and what they were going to bring to our community, uh, it's not that. And we've looked past that. They promised us the six-foot fence. You can literally stand on that wall, step over into my swimming pool, which becomes a liability issue for me.
I'm sharing your picture.
Sorry, I have done.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So I have some liability concerns that somebody could, could, one, stand there and just watch my kids play in their yard. And it's just not what they said it was going to be. Uh, the damages, I've dealt with, cracks walls, broken cabinets, shelves falling off the garage and, uh, the Crosleys had the shelf fall off their garage wall and dent their cars. I mean, this whole project has been, and we've kind of said, like Jamie, you know what? Let's just get it done. It's good for the community. And that's all we're asking them to do, is hold up to your end of the agreement. Our two major concerns before we all agreed to, yeah, rezone it and, and bring something that brings something but weeds to our community, we're all for it. And it, it just hasn't been that. And so that's, you know, they're, Dell Abbott couldn't be here because of his health and, and he, he feels the same way. We just really need to sit down with them and we've tried to talk with them in the past. Not real good to work with just the developer directly. The comments to us are, well, it's the code. But I, I think that the code allows somebody to put a retaining wall and then backfill four feet of dirt and then count that as their portion of their fence is.
Read that, Matt, read that again, because that's not how it reads. I've read it.
The code?
The code.
Because that's what they've done, is they've built the retaining wall, backfilled it four feet to the retaining wall. And it's, it's actually, uh, 46 inches high. And then they're saying that the retaining wall counts as the six-foot fence, which, to me, that's an interpretation thing.
Sidewalks on top of the retaining wall, so I think you go from the sidewalk up.
Yeah, that's the six feet.
That's the way I interpret it.
Yeah.
But it's, it's definitely a privacy concern.
Okay. Thank you.
The workers just staring in your backyard all day. Plus, the garbage can is there, I'm sure that that's where the staff and everybody will take their smoke breaks and I really don't want them looking in my yard 24/7.
Do we have a approximate date with construction being done?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
It's close, they're pushing to, I mean, it's getting close.
It's like, do you know?
They're already advertising, uh, they're actually advertising now, getting people into it, so it's real close.
Okay.
I think two, isn't that a three-way assisted living and two of them are done?
That wouldn't surprise me.
Isn't all the work done on the?
And I guess that's why we're here, is, my concern is, is that as soon as they get permission to run as a business.
We're not going to see.
We're not going to be able to have any, any.
We're not going to have that poll.
To stand on, exactly. So, just whatever you guys can do to, to get them in and, and do the right thing.
Yeah, we agree.
That's, that's all we're asking. Uh, it's a simple fix. We don't have to make it difficult. Um, and honestly, what they saved by taking that small section down to four feet, i- is not worth the headache that it's going to cause them going forward. So anyways, appreciate your time, appreciate, you know, you guys, the willingness to listen to all the issues. I know you guys have filled it a lot lately, but we do appreciate that, that you guys are listening and, and engaging the community, so thank you.
Okay, thank you for input, thank you. Anybody else would like to share thoughts, comments?
I've been there.
Name and address, thank you.
I'm Kevin Homer, I live at 5398 South 4000 West here in, in Roy.
Yes.
What I ask about right now isn't nearly as important or as serious as what these good people have been bringing up, but I am curious, I would like to know about the ramp, ramp funding. What other projects the city has that are using ramp funding, what the total dollar amount is? If we don't have that information right now, maybe we can email correspondents.
Do you want, do you want the existence of ramp or the last couple of years?
No, I, I'm aware, you know, ramp exists, we were counting program. It's actually quite more expansive and can do more than a bench and a concrete pad. I was just wondering, to what extent is the city using that ramp funding? If we don't have the.
Well, we, we.
You want to know history of it?
Yeah, he's put in for some.
Send you stuff and send you lists and stuff.
All right, great, thank you.
That they've put in.
You'll need to get a, an address or an email address from him to do that, okay? Okay, good. Anybody else like to share a thought, comment? Okay, seeing none. Let's go ahead and we'll go into the city manager's report.
All right. Just a couple of items tonight, actually. The first item of business would be, uh, the summer hours. As you guys know, we often, we, we change that every year when school gets out. So school's getting out, so the week of the 28th of this month, we'll be adjusting the administration's summer hours to be, um, four and a half days. And then it goes up until, uh, August 18th, the week of August 18th, it goes back to regular hours. So the city of staff still works the 40 hours, they just extend those hours, 7:30 to 5:30, Fridays out at 11:30. So that's coming soon. Uh, this Saturday's going to be a big day for recreation. Uh, the Golden Spoke is going to be this Saturday from Provo to Ogden, it's a bicycle race. They're going to be coming the other direction, they're going to be going northbound this year. So they're planning on leaving Roy City around 2:30 to 3 o'clock. Um, they've, they've changed the venue over to the 6000 South Trailhead, that's our new facility over there that Ramp, um, helped pay for.
That's right.
So we have some bathrooms. Travis Flint, uh, Parks and Rec Director, and his team will be over there, uh, giving out some water and providing a little bit of first aid if needed. Also, we have a big softball tournament, um, so come see Mayor Dandoi throw the first pitch with Wesley.
Mayor Bollos is going to be throwing a pitch too. We'll find out who gets to the, uh, gets to the catcher first. Better be, she's pretty tough.
Yeah, yeah.
She's very athletic, you better.
You better.
You better practice a few times.
Yeah, I'm going to get her a softball, I'm going to hardball.
You've got to show her up.
So that, that event will start about 12:30. So that will, that'll be a lot of fun. Um, just to kind of follow up with the neighborhood cleanup, um, the May, June and half of July is already full. And so we have about a month and a half that we can still reserve for, for the dumpsters to clean up some neighborhoods, so.
That's great.
Um, it's been a little, it's been successful, I feel, um, and we'll have to see what the outcome will be, uh, when they start cleaning up, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind if we could take, maybe if, let them know to take some pictures that we can basically put maybe on our website or kind of like the organization's different areas that have done it, that have helped out and stuff, so.
That's a good idea, so.
Like to get a little bit more feedback, got it.
That's great. And that's it.
Perfect. Thank you, Matt. Counsel, any comments, questions? Anything you'd like to share? Brian?
Yeah. Budget. Going back to the budget, notice, um, Roy has a projected, according to the preliminary budget, Roy has a projected increase in sales tax, 4.58 percent, which puts us at 10% the last two years in growth in sales tax, unless my figures are wrong.
No, it's about 4.5, yeah.
Okay. So, anyway, that is good news for all of us.
Good comment. Anybody else like to share a thought? Counsel? Okay, do I have a motion then to adjourn?
I make that motion to adjourn.
Thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second her motion.
Thank you, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? We're going to adjourn and we're going to go right into our RDA board meeting.
Make a motion, we go into the RDA board meeting.
I like that too. Do I have a second?
She just did.
Thank you, Jan. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're in our RDA board meeting. Uh, just want to basically recognize, we have all the council members with us today. And there is, uh, on the list, there's a consent item, but you have not seen the approved April 16th redevelopment agency minutes.
Mayor, can, can I just ask if there are students here that need to leave? If we could get their papers signed.
Oh, yes, yes.
Come up, we can sign.
Good call.
Sorry.
Yeah, just bring those right up and we'll get them signed for you.
If, if they need them signed.
And we'll jump right into the rest of the RDA board meeting. Thanks for joining us.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Okay. I, I, we need to table the April 16th redevelopment minutes. We do not have them, we have not reviewed those, so we'll go ahead and table those. Uh, we'll go ahead and, and discuss the presentation. And, uh, this is a presentation dealing with the 2020 RDA board budget proposal.
Yes, uh, just a quick rundown, there's really no requirement to do this presentation, but we just wanted to do, do it for transparency purposes. RDA, the current budget is around $2.4 million. Um, we're still going on with the loan program, still looking for new ways to use that money. So, yeah, uh, we're going to look in tonight to potential CRAs and this will help facilitate some of that, that cost, so.
Okay. So with that then, uh, any com, comments, questions about the RDA proposed budget? Can I ask the question, Matt, do you plan on also discussing this in concert with our workshop meeting?
Wasn't, wasn't planning on it, but we can if, if it was wanted.
You think there might be a need, counsel?
I don't see a lot of questions coming to me.
I do have one question about the budget. I know we've, we've enacted the loan program. Do we currently have anybody? I mean, I've had a lot of people talk about it, I think a couple's been turned in, but are we anywhere on any?
We have.
One.
One in, in, in process.
Potential four more coming in.
Okay.
One application in progress.
Already approved.
Application's been funded.
Been funded.
Funded one, Bert Bloom Center.
Okay.
And then we've got potential four more that might be coming in.
And we've got money, a lot of people have asked, but just haven't got them in here to fill out the application?
And Morgan's the one who's the recipient to help them through that, so, uh, if they contact her, it's, uh, we get the game going, okay? Then, Matt, would you consider then also, let's just had a few moments, uh, during our workshop to discuss the RDA proposal? I think Dave's right, I don't think there'll be a lot of discussion on that, but I think we're in good shape to open that up. I think Dave's right, I don't think there'll be a lot of discussion on that, but I think we're in good shape to open that up. Okay, we have some action items. Randy, you wanna discuss with us then, as we go through these resolutions a little bit, and we'll see if we entertain any questions from the council?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at the April sixteenth meeting, we reviewed with those board members that were here, some proposed project areas that we'd like to move forward and create. I believe in your packet, you have the resolutions that would create those survey areas and also a map of those. There are three proposed areas. The first one would be the nineteen hundred southeast community reinvestment area, which is basically the property going from the Walgreens and moving north and taking in everything on nineteen hundred west and only taking in a portion of the marketplace, which is the south end of that. We're leaving out the Harman's development for the most part, and then kind of taking some property on Riverdale Road. So, that's the survey area. Now, as we go through this process, this is the first of seventeen steps. Mr. Tafoya's been through this a number of times, so he understands that process. And when we do the study of the area, we may come back and actually shrink that for the actual project area that you will actually adopt. But we wanna do that entire survey of that area and then determine which properties would be best suited for a community reinvestment area. So, this resolution basically sets up that area as our survey area and allows us to go forward and move forward with the survey. So, that's what this resolution nineteen-one does.
Okay. Any comments, questions, counsel, on resolution then nineteen-one? Okay, hearing none? Then, do I have a motion then to approve RDA resolution nineteen-one?
Motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve.
Okay, do I have, go ahead, finish that?
Of resolution number nineteen dash one, a resolution designated the creation of the nineteen hundred southeast community reinvestment area.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, this is a roll call vote?
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeoman?
Aye. Oh.
Sorry, board member.
Oh.
Thank you.
Aye.
Board member Yeoman?
Aye.
Board member Saxton?
Aye.
Board member Tafoya?
Aye.
Board member Burrell?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, you wanna discuss then, Randy, number nineteen-two?
Yes, and while I'm looking at these, one little correction that we'll need to do, I just noticed it when I was reading them, we'll need to approve the date of adoption, and I'll make that change. We have April sixteenth because we had that on the previous agenda, so I'll just make that change. So, just to note that on each one of these resolutions, we'll need to change the date of approval. Resolution nineteen-two again sets up the survey area for our second, which is the southwest side of nineteen hundred. And this basically takes the property from fifty-six hundred south to McDonald's. And that is the area that we want to survey. As we've mentioned, we've had some interest with some potential development in that area, and we want to move forward and proceed with the creation of the survey area and eventually a project area. So, this resolution does that exact same thing and sets that property up in the survey area.
Okay. Counsel, or board members, any comments, questions?
Nope.
Okay, then, do I have a motion then to approve resolution nineteen-two?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution nineteen dash two on the southwest community reinvestment project area.
Thank you, do I have a second on that?
With the adjusted date of today?
Yeah, okay, today. Thank you. Okay, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you, it's a roll call?
Board member Burrell?
Aye.
Board member Tafoya?
Aye.
Board member Yeoman?
Aye.
Board member Saxton?
Aye.
Board member Paul?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. And then a discussion on resolution nineteen-three, which deals with the DNRG.
Right, this project area is basically the area down along the DNRG trail and four thousand south. We're looking at taking in, I don't have the north and south, but it is in that area, you had a map in there. This is the UTA property that we think will eventually be developed. We believe, given the fact of other developments occurred on that rail corridor, that the developer will ask for a CRA when the time comes. So, again, we wanna move forward with this and get that ready for when that time comes. So, that is the area that this resolution covers for the survey to determine what the actual project area would be.
So, it's four thousand north?
I said.
It'll be south of four thousand and north of forty-eight.
And north of probably, I don't know what that is, forty-two hundred south, probably right in that area along that, the trail and the railroad tracks.
Between the trail and the road.
Jan, do you need to see it?
I can, I can kinda where it is.
Okay.
Randy, I got a question on this particular area, because most of the time we've ever done this before, it's always been a commercial area, this is more or less it's industrial right now, maybe mixed use, maybe mostly multifamily. What tax increment benefit do we gain from that?
Well, there are two things. First of all, when we create these new CRAs, we're gonna have a requirement that ten percent of the tax increment that's generated has got to be used for residential development. I think there are a couple of things that come into play with this, is first of all, this could be an area that we may want to use that residential increment to help benefit for that. Second of all, you all are aware of SB thirty-four that was passed. SB thirty-four was a bill that requires every city to put in their general plan where they're going to do affordable housing. That bill had a provision that you didn't do it, you would lose your Class C funding. That was taken out. But I was at a meeting last week where it was a good indication that if cities don't do this voluntarily, then there will be next year, next year's session, you will lose your Class C funding unless you make an effort to do affordable housing. So, because of what you just said, that this might become a higher density, a multifamily, and it could become one of those affordable housing, we think that by creating this area, that could be a benefit to the city as a whole of meeting both SB thirty-four and also using some of that ten percent increment that might be generated in a specific area. So, that's the reason why we're looking to create it.
Okay, other comments, questions, board? Okay, hearing none? Do I have a motion then to approve resolution nineteen-three? So moved.
Mayor, I make a motion for the approval of resolution number nineteen dash three, a resolution dating, designated the creation of the DRNG community reinvestment area on?
It's today's date?
Today's date.
May seventh.
May seventh.
May seventh, thank you, okay. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is a roll call vote? You're okay?
Who made the second, I'm sorry?
I did.
Yeoman?
Board member.
Board member Yeoman?
Aye. Oh, yes, aye. Is that an aye?
Board member Saxton?
Aye.
Board member Paul?
Aye.
Board member Burrell?
Aye.
Board member Tafoya?
Nay.
Okay, and then we have the next step, and we just need to get a feel for this one. We need to review the approval to provide funding for the demolition of property within the Marketplace Shopping Center. Do you wanna talk to that?
If you'd like me to, or, okay. So, we have been approached with the idea that the former Chinese buffet building, the owners of that property are looking for a new tenant there, and we're trying to come up with a way of how to move forward, and we would like to see that gone. I think it's a nice orb, just plain and simple. And with the idea that they're looking at doing something different, and because it's blighted, and it, I don't think anybody's gonna argue about that, we felt like we'd like to give an incentive to try to move them along and get them to demo that building. When we met with Mr. Walter Brock, who is the agent representing that, he indicated they had gotten a bid for demolition for thirty-five thousand dollars. And he was trying to go through his process of try to get that funded without having a specific tenant. So, the Economic Development Committee met, and it was their recommendation that, well, how about if we come up with a way that the city or the redevelopment agency could do what I call a deferred loan grant? We would lend them the money to demo the building, and then if they did not put a retail tenant on that facility.
Tax generating.
Tax-generated sales tax, they would pay us back that thirty-five thousand plus interest.
I like that, because at one point they talked, when we were at one of our conventions, about maybe putting in a bank or something like that. Well, that doesn't give us any money, so we're investing money in something that doesn't pay us back. Cleans up a nice building, but we want some return on investment for the money we're gonna spend.
When I specifically asked how much that would generate?
Well, again, it depends on what goes there. One of the tenants they talked about that might go on that location, which was a fast food retailer, knowing what they do, they could do about four million in sales, which for a sales tax standpoint would give you about forty-five thousand a year. And so, what we're trying to say is that we don't mind, as a redevelopment agency, lending the money to them to demo the building. It does, first of all, it gets rid of a blight, but we're encouraging them to put a retail-producing tenant on there. And if it is a sales tax, a retail that does generate sales tax, then we would make that a grant to them and not require them to pay it back.
How many years did we, does it say?
We told them they have to start demolition, I believe in the letter is within six months, and they've got two years to fulfill that obligation, to have a tenant on that. On site, so really, you figure building, it's probably a year.
Because what I understand, we sent through the layer, there was no reply, so we did get the reply back to say.
Yes.
Yes, we have it now.
We have it now, that they would abide by those terms and conditions. And we felt for transparency reasons, even though we have money in the RDA budget for demolition, we felt like we need to bring this back to the board and have you as a board concur with that direction.
Comments, board members? Okay, good rundown.
Remind me again, this is, is this Woodbury we're dealing with?
Yes.
It is, but it's it's a different agent.
Okay, but we've got, how many properties, how many properties do they have that are sitting empty right now?
Probably about fifteen.
That they have not been compliant on?
But we are, in fairness, we are beginning to fill those properties, and.
I wanna see more good faith effort.
Well, no, no, I mean, I wish I could talk about what's coming, but.
I understand, I understand. I understand what you're saying, Brian.
And, yeah, could they be easier to work with? Yes, I'm the one that has, well, the mayor and Joe.
I just have a hard time doing a favor for somebody that hasn't been very.
Oh, I totally agree, and I brought that up the last time we met with them down, it was in either St. George. That's why I do like the stipulation that if we're going to give you the money to get rid of it, that it brings in something. I mean, call it a tax relief, call it a stipend, call it whatever, you're gonna put something back in there in a short period of time, or you owe us the money back with interest.
And we are, we are in fact doing a favor for the residents that have to look at that building.
I understand how it looks.
For those businesses that have already committed to Roy to stay there. I mean, Harman's probably doesn't.
I was gonna say, if anything, it's more help now, Harman's than it is anything.
And that's why this way we're.
Oh, I have mixed emotions, because there hasn't been a lot of love from that.
Joe doesn't like them at all, I.
I wouldn't go that far, but I do have some, I do have a little heartburn that they haven't shown us any love, so.
For years.
Yeah, how long have they left vacant buildings? Fortunately, they've got, there's some new people in the works. You know, two of the buildings that are adjacent to Ocean Mark are under contract and should be closed. That's helpful, if we can get rid of that one with a stipulation that something's gonna come back in there that's gonna generate. And right now, we have some money to help out. Not that you just wanna blow it, but hopefully through what Randy's proposing, we can get some return on investment. That's my only hope for it.
Okay, to your point.
Are we voting tonight on this?
Yeah, I think we need to have at least a, not a roll call vote, but at least a yea or nay. But let's just finish the conversation. We can't provide a lot of details, but I think it's important that the council hear what we have to say offline, because.
I think if you're appropriating funds, it has to be a roll call vote, because you're voting on.
Well, now, you've already, so technically, we have in the budget that you adopted last year, we have eighty-three thousand dollars for demolition.
Right, okay.
We did not specifically state what would be demoed, but I do know that when we were talking about that budget last year, this was one of the projects we had had some conversation about demolishing, because just to your point, at the ICSC last year, when we met with Woodbury's, Woodbury's had talked to us about the idea they had a tenant for that and wanted, at the time, it was.
We were looking at seventy-five thousand dollars.
Well, yeah, and it was trying to get the lease rate, if you remember, it was trying to get the lease rate at a point that this client that we wanted, because it was a really good retail tenant, would be willing to lease.
Have we heard if that tenant's still on?
Yes, that tenant is still, is still being discussed with. So, what we said back then is we said, well, how about if we go back to our RDA board and talk about maybe providing some money for demolition that would help get that rent down? And so, that's why we put the money in the budget last year. However, so it's a budget item, however, because of it being Woodbury and because of it being the fact that they have not always been a good partner in certain things.
I like how you put that.
The board, we felt that as a staff, that we should bring this back to the board because it's specifically going for that use and get your, your okay to move forward with that.
Well, I like the fact that we've received the letter back that they're willing to, you know, agree to those terms. I mean, if we hadn't received that letter back, I don't know if I wanted to move forward.
Well, then, I'd just like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve.
Hold on, let me ask Andy, Andy's gonna tell us.
There was a question that was asked, do we need to make a roll call vote, and I'd like to address that.
Yes.
We don't have to unless it creates a liability against the city. This agreement doesn't create a liability against the city. So, you don't have to have a roll call vote on this. If you would like to, you can, and if there's, if we're unclear, if we have, you know, three to two or whatever you can't tell by, not having a roll call vote, then let's have a roll call vote.
Sure.
But you can have a roll call vote anytime, any one of you would suggest.
Yeah, that's right.
So, do you put that in the motion, or what do you?
Let's do that, let's write it front, find out where you go. So, who gives me a motion basically to approve us? Go ahead and sign the letter, this bond and agreement between us and the Woodbury Company in terms of the demolition of the marketplace, specifically the old buffet building that's located that side.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the thirty-five thousand dollar demolition money for the Chinese gourmet building owned by Woodbury, per the letter, and it be done by a roll call vote.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Just a point of clarification, Andy, is this a contract or just a letter that's been back and forth?
No, it's an agreement, yeah, it's an agreement.
And could be litigated if we needed to, to get.
Yeah, if they don't follow through.
Yeah, yeah, it could.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, this roll call vote, please, Morgan?
Board member Burrell?
Aye.
Board member Tafoya?
Aye.
Board member Yeoman?
Aye.
Board member Saxton?
Aye.
Board member Paul?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. Anything else, board, anything else you wanna talk about?
Can we go over and have a party when they start beating on it?
I'm excited to see it down.
Let's take turns with the backhoe, come on, bring it over.
Do I have a motion, just before we end, Mayor, I mean, I wanna make one comment about Harman's gas station thing. We all kinda thought that might have been a negative thing, but it is up there now, it looks very good, it adds to that marketplace plaza.
And I think when that Chinese place is gone, I think it's really gonna make a difference, how that's gonna look.
Well, I think. We always rush to judgment sometimes, and sometimes it's not the right judgment, and sometimes you should sit back and wait to see what.
It's very open, so you'll see the building, I think you get rid of that Taiwanese gourmet, and maybe that'll help infuse getting some of those other, you know, vacant buildings or vacant slots full, so.
Yeah.
It's a beginning, we're moving in the right direction.
Can I add one other thing to that? Watch what will happen to the sales tax from Harman's with that gas being there. You will see a significant increase because I met with Steve Sorenson, who does Smiths. And that's why Smiths, every Smiths they build now, they have a fuel station, because their sales is between ten and twenty percent higher.
Wow.
So, you should see a significant increase because of your decision to move forward with that.
Offering incentive, the more money you spend, the more money you get off on fuel.
Yep, and it's a big incentive, it really is.
Okay, a great conversation, thank you for the input. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, second?
Second.
I like it, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, thank you, thank you for joining us. Great meeting.